Okay, this is a regularly scheduled board meeting of Edgewood City School District. We're gonna go ahead and get started. This is thought we call it a please.
Mrs. Ashcraft.
President.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Pressler.
Here.
Mr. York.
Present.
And for the record, Mr. Gagin is present.
Would you please stand before the pledge of allegiance in the name of the state?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How's your start?
Ladies and gentlemen, dear Lord Jesus, we've come to you tonight just to say thank you. Thank you for Edgewood City Schools, thank you for our school board, thank you for Kelly, our new superintendent. Father, thank you for every teacher, every staff member, every administrator. Father, thank you for keeping them safe today with this weapon. Father, I pray today you bless every teacher, or you bless this meeting tonight made be honoring to you as you give this school board wisdom as decisions need to be made. Father, that you would meet the financial needs of Edgewood City Schools, meet the physical needs, Father, meet the spiritual needs as well. And Father, we pray today for every bus driver, every police officer, every custodian, cafeteria workers, all those who play an important part in the education of our children. And so, Father, we commit this time into your hands tonight. We love you so much, and we thank you so much for loving us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
At this time, we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
I'm not sure if we have a presentation at this time.
So let's ask the board to have a seat, and then ask Mr. Gagin to come forward. And I've asked our high school principal to present this evening because graduation requirements seem to change all the time. It seems like just yesterday I graduated. Now, I know most of you know differently, but back in the day, it just took some credits and you moved on, an ACT test and you could go to college. Today, you have to have more and more credits and you have to certainly meet more requirements. So, Mr. Gagin, welcome. And we certainly appreciate all you do for our high school students and our school district, and we look forward to your presentation this evening.
Thanks, Mrs. Spivey. Uh, thanks, Board, for letting me be here today to kind of explain something that is has grown more and more complicated as years go by. So, um, graduation used to be just get nineteen credits, twenty credits, and twenty-one credits. And now, through the years, it becomes more and more complex. So this is the kind of the winding road of accountability. So, local control was from eighteen twenty-five to nineteen ninety-three means each district kind of determined with some state guidelines, how many math credits you need, how many science credits, how many English credits, you know, PE courses, all those. And then, with the class of nineteen ninety-four, we had the Ohio Proficiency Test. And to kind of give some background on that, my first year teacher was nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven. I taught a course called Buckle Down to Citizenship, which was for those students who failed a government test at King's High School. So from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and eight, we had a freshman test. They would be testing five subject areas, uh, government, science, math, reading, and writing. Then the state said, no, that test is not good enough, it's too simple. We're gonna go to the OGT test. And that was from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen. And that test was for sophomores. It replaced the Ohio Proficiency Test. And not only did they either have to pass this test, it set guidelines for them to be exempted from the consequences of that test. And even, I believe it was last year or the year before, we had a graduate or a potential graduate come back to our building to take an OGT test to try to graduate. Then, we shifted from OGT to this PARC test. This was a Common Core. We did that for one year. Governor Casey said, nope, we're not gonna do PARC anymore. We're gonna do what we called AIR. And the reason why it was called AIR test was it was the company that owned the test, Americans Institutes of Research. And that was from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. There had, um, multiple tests, and you had to get eighteen points and pass all your credits to graduate. Then, two thousand twenty to twenty-two, with COVID, we had this kind of three-fold path. It was crazy as we had, if a student was gonna take a test in two thousand twenty during, but we had COVID, there was grade substitution. Then there was, okay, so if you had an A, you got a five, you got a B, you got four points. And trying to shuffle through all that system was challenging. And then, if they didn't meet that graduation requirement, well, we could jump into the EOC SEALs and they only had to pass English and Algebra One and then get SEALs to graduate. So we were juggling through three different spreadsheets to make sure everyone could graduate. Now, we're at two thousand twenty-three, and we have the EOC test, which is End of Course Assessment, and also SEALs. So now, when a student graduates from Edgewood High School, they're gonna earn SEALs. And the big question, and I've had this conversation with Mr. York, with Ms. Talawanda and other principals, where do you put these SEALs? So they're like little stickers. Do you put them on the diploma, do you put them on the front, do you put them on the back? We're gonna put them on a wax paper and then let students decide where to put the SEALs. So that's kind of the winding road of accountability. I wanna focus kind of on keeping track of the data for this year's class. So not only that, but the state also gave us a new requirement. It's a good requirement, but we have to now, every student that's in the freshman class beyond has to take personal finance. And it's taught by our social studies teachers, but it cannot be used as social studies credit. So students still need twenty-one credits to graduate from Edgewood High School, but half of that credit has to come from a financial literacy, from those elected credits. So then, they have to show competency on those two tests, the Algebra One and the ELA Two. A competency score, we used to say they'd have to pass it with a three. Now, a high two, which is six eighty-four or higher, will allow them to graduate, plus getting SEALs. They must earn at least two SEALs. One must be a state SEAL and one must, could be a local SEAL that was approved by the board a couple of years ago. So that's the first, I kind of wonder where this is a lot, but this is a document from the state of Ohio that we communicate with our staff and students on. That just shows the first step to graduation needs to credit. The state of Ohio says twenty credits to graduate, we do twenty-one. This becomes part of the choose your own adventure piece that I like to call, because there's many different avenues to take. So the first part is, students take the Algebra One and English Two test. We have some eighth graders take the Algebra One test. So if they pass that, then they're halfway through, um, they're testing that they need to graduate. And then, sophomores take the English Two test. So six eighty-four or higher to take this mark. But if you don't meet that, if you don't meet that criteria, then we do this twelve-point industry credential. And the state said, hey, you can choose your industry credential. And we went through and looked at SUR safe, which is a common, uh, industry credential. And we chose FEMA because it was very doable and manageable for us. So they get ten points, no, nine points for the industry credential, and then they get a point for CPR and two points for stop the bleeding. So all our students are doing this right now, especially those that don't meet this graduation requirement. We have a class next week where our seniors, Edgewood seniors, are gonna do this. If they don't meet that criteria, then they can enlist in the military. And now, we need paperwork that says that they're going to enlist. Before, if they said, we're gonna enlist, that's good, they can graduate. And then, the third option, which we started a couple of years ago, is if a student does not pass Algebra One or the English Two test, we allow them to take a basic level college course in quantitative analysis, which is Math one hundred at the State or English one oh one. The requirement to get into Math one hundred is passage of Algebra Two. And that helps some of our students gain the graduation requirements. Are there any questions so far with this? I know it sounds really complicated, but it gets even more.
It's like a puzzle.
And that's what.
You can't pass Algebra One test, you're just gonna pass Algebra Two, then take a college level class. What is your greatest fear about?
Just to pass.
Just pass.
And we do have students who do that. It's more of a statistical class, so it's not like Algebra One. So it helps our students to pass. So, but it is, it's really complicated. And so each kid, you have to go through this lens and say, okay, did they pass the EOC test? Okay, if not, then let's get industry credentials. Or they can't do that, then what about these college credit courses for the military?
So when we talk about a pre-apprenticeship or approved apprenticeship program, are we talking skilled training apprenticeships that we're talking about?
Yes, but most, we have not gotten that off the ground because it's so difficult to work with the industry and also have eighteen-year-olds that can do it. So we're working through graduation, we haven't been able to really tackle that subject yet. So, and the state doesn't really give you a whole lot of guidelines to say, hey, do this, but don't go to this company and figure this out. It's almost Wild Wild West. The next thing, they have to get two SEALs. All students have to get these SEALs, even special ed students. So Ohio being strong ready to seal is a doable seal for most of our students. It's, it's getting references, checks from three adults, and they complete this paperwork. And it, it's really doable, and a lot of our students have done that. Industry recognized credential, if they're going through credential through Butler Tech or if they're getting the FEMA credential, then they'll get that seal. College-ready seal is an ACT score that's college-ready, so that's there. Military enlistment seal, well, there's a couple of varieties, how to get this seal. One, two years JRTC, where you sign up for the military. So we have students that can get that through our JRTC program. Citizenship seal is passing our EOC US History test and our EOC Government test. And if they don't pass that, then they could pass AP Government or AP US History, get that seal. Then there's a Science seal, which is the Biology test, they pass the Biology test. Or, so you have to run through this with every kid, or they have to take an advanced science and get a B in that science course. And it takes, like, I had a conversation with the secretary, does this student qualify? Well, they didn't pass the Biology test. Okay, but they took Chemistry their next year in sophomore. They gotta be in that course. Does that work? Well, no, because that was their sophomore year, and that comes as a physical science requirement, not as advanced science, so that doesn't count. So there's so many different avenues with this. And it takes three or four people kind of work through every kid, encounter every argument, say, okay, yes, this qualifies or not. So then there's community service, which we said ten hours of community service is a local seal. Um, Fine Arts and Performing Arts seal, that's two art courses at Edgewood High School. And Engagement seal, participating in activity for two seasons.
Who manages the community service?
Uh, for example, a lot of our Virtual Academy students do that through the social services program. So, but to manage that, some of our councils do it for regular access, but it's, that's what we're gonna get to next, is how do you keep track of all this? And this is our spreadsheet.
How many graduates do you average a year? I shouldn't say graduates, how many students in a class?
Three hundred and five students.
So every student, you're going through every single one of these requirements?
So there it has the credits, I took the names off. It has the ELA Two scores. And so, for example, it, most the way down, there's a twenty point two five credit. So you've got a two, but got a six eighty-eight, so they count that as good. And then you go through each of these lines by students. And I talked to Mrs. Spivey, too, it's just, there could possibly be human errors, so that's why we want you to always go through this sheet. I keep one, and only three people have access to edit it, myself, Mr. Ayler, and Mrs. Lawson. And then Mrs. Lyman, who handles seniors plus all the councils, have another document. And then we, this is the one that they can't touch. And then they say, well, I think this kid has this seal. And then I say, okay, show it to me that they have the seal, and then I click on, they have that seal. And we meet twice a month to track this data.
Mr. Gagin, so when students start taking their End of Course Assessments, you're starting this list on passage and failure as well as amount of credits. So this is really, the tracking system begins when?
After their freshman year.
So do we, if a student moves out of the district, do we send this information with them and this information without it?
It's all through their transfer, it's on their transfer. So we work through the SEALs. But it's, that's part of the challenge that we have here is, that the challenge is, is the data is in multiple locations. There's not, we use Dazzle, we use Data Map to track some of our data. Some of that's in there, but not all this data is in there. So you can't go to some system and say, oh, it's all taking all of our data and said, this kid's good to go.
It all, the systems don't all talk to each other, so you have to record this separately. It's a shame.
But you do record the, since you do record the SEALs on the transfer.
So, and there's no, like I said, no data warehouse that auto collects it all. There's multiple variables, so you can see for each kid, if that's the first start with Algebra One, ELA Two, okay, they're good there, then we can go look at SEALs. And the new game changer, I talked to Miss White, is that our special ed population have to get SEALs. Before, we would just excuse them from the consequences of the test, if they passed it. Now, they need SEALs. And working for those students to get those SEALs. And then you have the industry credential, and there's knowledge gaps. If you look way back in the system here, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, we were on a completely different graduation track for our students as that. It's hard, like, our teachers think, oh, those kids have to pass all seven of these tests. They don't. They, our students take a geometry test by the state of Ohio that has no consequences to their graduation. But the state requires us to take it.
You know, we were in proficiencies for the longest amount of time. Tom will tell you that many educators feel like, you know, there's money to be made. Notice the number of years that the new assessments are only good for. There's a lot of money to be made in, in, uh, that game of assessments as well as curriculum. It's a shame. Because what happens is, students, as soon as they master the understanding of the target, we're moving it. And it just doesn't seem like a fair game, in my opinion.
It affects the achievement as well. Once the students figure out that they don't need to test, they don't always give their best efforts to pass the remaining tests ahead. So I hear the stories about students graduating high school early and all. So with these SEALs, it seems to me like some of those could take a little bit of time after. How do you, how do you have kids that graduate early with all of these requirements?
Our academic would get the kids, we'll get it through just passing to the EOC test. So they'll get the Citizenship Seal, which is passing the US History Government EOC test. And they'll get the Science Seal by passing the Biology.
We have eighth graders right now earning high school credit. So they're getting a, uh, they're starting earlier than the average student, just based on their performance.
You only need two SEALs to graduate. So you look at, yeah, when you look at all those SEALs, are they gonna get, gather them all? You only need two to graduate. But the two, one has to be a state SEAL, one has to be a local SEAL. So if you have a, a student that's in athletics or core leers or band, they're gonna get the Engagement Seal. And if they're in band or core leers, they're gonna get the Fine, Fine Arts and Performing Arts Seal, but they have to give one other SEAL. You know, and, and the challenge, I asked Mrs. Spivey, is we're doing the best we can tracking this data, but what happens if a student gets upset and says, hey, I really got this seal and need to put on my graduation? And we'll have to go back and look at that. There may be a few errors in that. Our main focus is making sure the kids have the SEALs. Kind of solution is we have average meetings. We're, we're shifting, um, we talked with Mrs. Spivey and Mr. Pressner here, kind of, they kind of said this idea of, hey, can we make it a class where students get this end-of-state credential? And, you know, as we start that financial literacy course, students are gonna earn their FEMA certificate in that course. So that'll be a backup plan, so at least every kid will have the industry credential pathway to graduate by their sophomore year. And really continue communication to family, students, and staff. You know, the staff, they kind of know it, but they just don't because they're not in this every day.
Well, Mr. Gagin, I'm sure there may be some questions for you, but I was very impressed with his recording system. Like I said, I've worked with several districts and, and, uh, his was very well put together. And I, in, in my opinion, needs to be commended for that. I know you're working above and beyond, and we appreciate that because this means our student's graduation requirement. And do they meet the mark or not? So thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gagin?
How do you handle the special education here?
We're working through that with the SEALs. So teachers, special ed teachers, uh, especially with Holly, Casey, and Alyssa are working to get their SEALs. So we'll, we'll get.
It would be our problem, not the student's.
Well.
Yes, and we have to fix that.
We need to fill that in to the day. Um, there's creative ways to do that, as long as it can be service and there won't be any type of coffee bar like that, aren't taught at work already, um, then they can accomplish that. And if we're really talking about our, our communities, our communities, students, making sure they get that right in the explore walls. Okay. So those three guys located for the job focusing on that.
Do Virtual Academy students get tracked on the same spreadsheet or a different, same program?
They may even start a little early because of the credit deficient piece, so.
One of the hardest, hardest things to, uh, communicate to parents in the public is that you've got an Edgewood system and you've got a state of Ohio system. Uh, even though they might meet all the requirements of one, they may not meet all the requirements of the other. And, um, I, I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't say this because my old boss is here, but whenever, whenever we had a student that passed EOC, uh, in an area that they had taken the class with Talawanda, didn't, there, there were times when they would fly by the EOC with a really great score, but not pass the course that corresponds to that EOC. So we would go back to the committee and look at, it wasn't just Mr. York that did it, but we would look at it as a committee, why, there's, there's something wrong, not with the student, but with us. Why are we doing here where they're doing so well in the EOC and not passing?
Or even the system, look at all the different variety of SEALs. Like, in my opinion, it's like we created this system of SEALs when our assessment system didn't work. It's almost like, that, why is, why does that composite create a graduate? See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But it does in Ohio, so those are the hoops we jump. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we're good, thank you.
All right, next we have public participation. Another student, I believe we have one, Erin Bowling.
Erin, thank you for joining us tonight. I'm mic'd right over here. And, uh, as a mom, grandma, and educator, I think student voice is important. So I know it's not easy coming, sheer concern, but we appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you, guys, my name is Erin Bowling. I am a junior high schooler in front of the academic team in Montevideo.
Erin, hang on just a second, do you care to put the microphone close? Scott, do you care to help her? There we go. Thank you. We wanna make sure we hear everywhere. Is it on? Hang on. Hang on, we have a tech expert open. Not this Mr. Pressner, who wasn't, he's our second tech expert.
Hello?
Should I turn it off or turn it back on?
There, it doesn't work that way. Here we go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Better, thank you, dear.
My name is Erin Bowling. I'm a junior in high school. I'm part of the academic team in Montevideo, and I have not buried any homework or past time by drawing rubber sticky and cooking. I also plan on joining the military and going to college with criminal justice. In addition to all this, I'm also a part of the EOC to keep community. Despite all of these parts of who I am, being clear is what it can be in my life. The moment I saw that, I was terrified. I've been in lockdown for four because of threats, but this was the first one where I was targeted. This was the first one to find out how unsafe it is for me and others like me in this school. Even though the threat could seem all that serious, I wouldn't admit to confess if it was. I'm a stranger to home, but yeah. When I was in sixth grade, someone threw a book at my head while I was holding another girl, another girl's hand. I was verbally harassed by my classmates, and teachers saw it happen and went the other way. Make no effort to try and stop them. Just after eighth grade, I was followed home by two boys who screamed towards me. No one at the school was ever there for me, let alone any staff members. In order for change to happen, more needs to be done. Addressing who the threat was against was the first step. But there needs to be support for students in classrooms and among their peers, such as making it easier to change preferred names in the system for transgender students. Teachers can also put out surveys at the beginning of the year asking for preferred names and pronouns. Teachers should keep a sharper eye on the bullying and not only towards students. It needs to be easier to contact counselors, and students need to be made aware that they have a safe space to talk regardless of how they identify. Another safe space for students would be an alliance club among their peers. This club will give resources to students who may not be comfortable showing their sexuality or gender. If students have questions, there would be an email that they could contact anonymously, which can be run by other students to answer questions and guide them through times of discovery. I know that all of us have different beliefs, and I believe that that is a good thing. My purpose here isn't to blame anyone, I simply want queer kids to feel less safe than anyone else. I hope we can use this thread as an opportunity to grow and strengthen our community. But I need your help to do so. I wanted to end this on a quote from Benjamin Franklin, whose justice will help you serve until you are affected by the outright stress of this law. I need your help.
Thank you, Erin, your courage and your voice, appreciate it. I, I just wanna say, I know we don't typically comment, um, after public participation, but Mr. Gagin, I would like to maybe get a meeting set up. And I know some of the questions asked aren't always understood. And, and, um, we do get some free service from legal counsel, so I think it wouldn't hurt to have some legal counsel there to answer questions so it's not coming from an administrator, okay? Would that be pleasing to you, Erin? It may take a few weeks, but, because we're working with an outside person, okay? Thank you.
Next, we have treasure items, uh, Mrs. Flowers.
Um, the first name was a work for motion to approve the board meeting minutes from the meeting on January the thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three?
So there.
Mr. Pressler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Is there a discussion? There are discussions, Father, we call it, please.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Then next agenda item, we would look for a motion to approve the treasure items as listed.
Is there a motion to approve the? Is there a motion to approve the treasure items, the financial report for January twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Mr. York, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Is there any discussion on these items? No discussion, flowers will call roll please.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. The next item, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve two donations as listed. Uh, one is for five hundred dollars, uh, the other one is for two hundred dollars for to the food service program.
Is there a motion to approve the donation as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Is there a discussion for these items?
It's very nice that we have somebody willing to do that, that is, that is extremely generous.
Do we know how many EMS students were affected with this?
Yeah, they actually, um, I don't have the students for the middle school, so Mr. Phil Park was able to designate and work with families um, to make those donations.
Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Flowers, you go roll please.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Next, we have superintendent items, um, Mrs.
Yes, um, the first item doesn't require any action. It's just a first reading of policy seven five ten, use of district premises. After reviewing policies, it was brought to our attention that we allow people to use our facilities from time to time. You, and it involves our own students, not during the school day, but outside of the school day. And so, um, I've been asked to see if there would be interest in uh, adding an item D to this policy seven five one zero, which would basically say users and assigned designees must pass district approved background check if working with community minors. Again, this isn't for a vote tonight, it's for consideration. Don't know if you want to have some discussion or put that off when we vote next month for a second reading.
So this hasn't, has overlooked it?
Yep.
So this hasn't always been, uh, seems crazy.
I agree. I think it's been an oversight, to be quite honest with you. If anyone meets with our stu- I will tell you that even contractors that are in our building have to have a background check. And they don't even work directly with our students, but they're on premises. Now that's during the school day. So I think our policies are very strict during the school day, but we've not been advised by council outside of the school day. And uh, certainly if it's with our own extracurricular, we, we do, but not when we don't own it. But my, my thought is if we're using our facilities and it involves our students, it doesn't matter what time of day it occurs, why wouldn't we background check our people?
Absolutely.
So food for thought, think about it. We always review policies twice, um, just bringing that to your attention tonight. Any other comments before I move on?
I, I do think we probably should have some discussion about this maybe later on agenda, because I, I'd like, there's some things that specifically I'd like to talk about on areas here, on, on some of the things that's in this policy that I didn't realize that were in there on types of organizations that is open to you.
Yes, and if you would like to work on any language that you would like us to directly uh, point out in the next meeting, get with me and I'll make those changes. It doesn't mean we approve what we present. We're having a discussion and you can, you can not approve, you can take part of it, or whatever you want to do.
Well, I do think, well, just really the thing that jumps out at me is I'm just trying to understand why we would make for our schools, uh, our facilities available to commercial and profit-making organizations.
We, it's basically money. They pay for the use of the facilities. But we don't have to.
There are vendors, like craft show. Cause they're actually making, they're a minor offer.
I think it, it, if you go back far enough, it came about because um, we got all these different communities coming in and they weren't part of, they weren't part of Wayne Township's on Barton Trenton, Jacksonburg, London Barton Trenton. And so, we kind of used the school campuses as a gathering point for the community. Uh, because Trenton really didn't have a place for anybody to, you know, to use a facility there for, for a, a group of people. So the school was used as a community spot.
So now that you've explained that, I really have a problem. I just didn't understand.
Why we would do that? That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have the right to approve it. So let's say any outside vendor wants to use a facility. They have to fill out a form, we have to approve it, we collect the money. I'm just saying we need to add a background check where, let's say so-and-so wants to use the baseball field and involves our students. That's fine, but part of the paperwork is not approved background, so we have that on file in our, in our records as well. But we have the right to deny it.
Does it say that in here? Because I, I don't remember specifically.
No, but it's our facility use. I mean, it, it's not an automatic at all.
Traditionally, the, the building principal that was, of the building that uh, was requested to be used at the initiative uh, approval, if they wanted to, at least that's, that's the.
You're right. That's always been, I went back in several districts, you're right. That would be part of the guideline, Mark, and I'd have to look, that is not part of policy, because I would imagine that's part of the guideline.
Correct.
Okay, good questions, good conversation. Again, if you want any other language changes, I'll add that for the secondary meeting. Next items, item B, field trips. You have uh, let's see, three, four trips, including um, the wrestling that's coming back for the second with far more details than last month. And uh, so, and all these are all different practices. You'll see a, a field trip on there for the zoo. I think we've been hitting the zoo for first grade for centuries now. I don't know. So there's four field trips that are before you for approval. There's a leadership conference, wrestling tournament, Cooper Buddies, that's part of their incentive program as well as a field trip for first grade.
Is there a motion to approve the field trips as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. York? Is there any discussion on these items?
Well, one thing I, I would say, Kelly, I, I do think, like I, I've looked at a lot of these that come in front of us and it's like there's, they're not all in the same form. Some forms ask for more detail than others.
Or some provide more detail.
And some provide more details than others, but I, you know, there's, I, I don't, I don't know if we have a rule.
Are you looking at overnight versus during the day, maybe?
Well, I've, I've just seen different formats for a lot of them. I'm just curious, do we have a standard form that we're using?
If you look at the first grade, that's a standard form. Um, let me open this up and look at the difference. I haven't looked at this since Friday.
Like the one, like for example, the high school wrestling tournament, that's on a different form than, than, like any other ones I've seen come through here. That looks like a different form.
I believe that's, they put it in, they typed it up based on.
No. He has the regular form at the very end.
Coach Kness is gonna be a pro at this one. It's also, we're gonna put him in charge of doing field trips for everybody.
So the proposal looks, looks like what's in the beginning, the standard form, hang on. Is at the very, yeah, page one of two, co-curricular, extracurricular. So it looks like you put a proposal before the actual form itself, Mark. There's a, looks like this is an eight-page document. So the standard form, where you see the O at the bottom, that's a standard form. Also, the proposal, I haven't seen a proposal being used in a very long time in any of the districts I've worked in, so I can't see that.
He has page eleven is where the actual form starts.
We always pick on Zach. Who is Zach still in the room? Oh, he's hiding right back there. Zach, did you happen to uh, have anything to do with this one? I'll leave you out of it. Gotcha, buddy. Hi, area. Yeah, I, I've not seen the proposal form as well, Mark, but the standard form is at the bottom of the scroll. Yeah.
I, I really wasn't sure what I was in at the very beginning of first.
Doug, can you maybe comment on?
So Mrs. Lyman does our field trips and she's recording Zach, so I think this is the form that she uses to get it started and then.
So maybe that's a building form and then the Neola is the district standard form. There you go. Bingo.
All right. Makes sense. Thank you.
I, we like to have answers versus estimations. I'm glad you asked.
So are any further discussion? Mrs. Flowers, you go roll please.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, very quickly, just would like to share a few superintendent update items. I will be presenting this week to the Monroe Middletown Chamber. We'll be talking about what we do at Edgewood for graduation, where our um, needs are. And really pleased to be working with the chamber president. He's actually going to work with us on honing in on um, the career pathway and actually offering careers and scholarships to students that may qualify. So very proud to be presenting to them and working with the chamber on how we can bring more careers to our, our students. When I looked at our data, it looks like our college data has dropped, which many have since COVID. We were about forty-something percent that attended college, not that they graduated, but an Edgewood student, about forty, forty-five, fifty percent would attend college. We dropped down to thirty-nine since COVID. That tells me we need to be really deepening up what we do for careers in our community. So um, pleased to be making that contact and working with our chairman president. Our top five, trying to just share some tidbits every month with our staff. We've got great things going on in Edgewood and this will be shared with staff tomorrow, but always try to put out just a little top five news around our goals. Instruction being one of them, innovation being a second, operations and community engagement. Just, you will see highlights in there, um, from middle school, just great relationships going on in many classrooms. But specifically, I'll point out Mrs. Mann's class. Innovation, our Butler Tech um, program under the director of Mr. Rocky Chestine. They went and competed in several categories. Two of our students came back and placed in innovation. You'll see their detailed plan of how they placed um, in the competition. Certainly want to commend our bus drivers. They work very hard today, being a perfect example. Three of our buses were in route, helped it pull back from the middle school. And uh, certainly go into tornado drill um, practice. So our, our, our people were great, communicated great. And then the community engagement, we're very excited that a series of coffee chats in the community will be uh, in summer. We got, sorry, wrong town. Seven Mile, I was gonna raise it seven ago, sorry about that. Seven Mile on March fourteenth, working with um, about thirty community members at the Presbyterian Church and they built the agenda. So they're gonna come in and talk about our goals, talk about how we spent COVID dollars, um, where we see needs, talk about fiscal solvency. So that's, I see that as a great opportunity. And then Friday, several of us are going into the transportation department, talking to bus drivers. Want to learn about what their peaks and fits are, what's going well, what are some things we can do better? Specifically with our, our transportation department. Next year, I hope to actually have something more organized, not as informal, but would like to put together a student advisory group as well as a community advisory group and uh, make regular meetings with at least two of those constituents. Um, talked a little bit about safety, but on that um, light, just want to share with the board an example of what Lisa Adams and I will be doing with our building principals as well as the SROs. We're gonna start building vulnerability checks and we'll be looking at the building perimeter, interior facilities, how we're communicating, our video surveillance, as well as policy and training per building. And this will help guide us as what's going well, what are some, maybe some data points that we're missing in all of our buildings that we need to provide professional development around? What do we need to plan with our safety committee that we can do better as we have our um, our safety officials at the table? So that'll give you an idea on that. And then, we've talked a little bit about lunch charges, so I'm not gonna put in on that anymore, but want to share two pieces on legislation with you. One is House Bill one. I know enough just to be dangerous. It came across my desk today. But it is talking about um, this change that will impact property taxation and income tax rates, which would be a significant negative impact on traditional public schools and local governments. I say this to the board, really stay tuned on, on our legislative updates. Anything you say, when we have opportunity, when we're put in these leadership roles, all of us at this table, we need to write our legislators and talk about what that story looks like in our own community. If you don't, they'll never know and shame on us. But I think House Bill one's gonna be something that we need to watch closely. And this whole voucher system that you've been, they've tried to tweak it over the years. I, I, there I am, I've been out in the business for a few years and we're still talking about the same thing. And Tom Shaking is heading, knows what I'm getting ready to say, but I think this whole system is built on dismantling public education. They're looking at taking seven thousand five hundred per high school student away from our public funding. They could go to any school, which I'm all about that part. You, we should be pro-choice. But then the private schools do not have to um, play by the same rules of accountability that public schools do. That's the part I have a problem with. When you take money away from public education that have higher requirements and give it to schools that have less, there's something wrong with that system.
And can choose their students, right?
Exactly. They can choose. So again, we've got to wake up and pay attention to that. And then also, I found this interesting. In this, I'll go back to House Bill one, you'll just hear me ranting and raving about this. But also I find it so interesting that teachers, when it comes to income tax time, in the past, I haven't had my income taxes done yet, but last year it was two hundred and fifty that we could claim on our taxes. And I, we know how much as teachers, principals, all of us spend money out of our pocket. I hear this year it might go up to three hundred and fifty. Well, guess what? In House Bill one, if you decide to um, take your students elsewhere out of public education, they're gonna give you a seven hundred and fifty dollar write-off per student. Where's the equity in that? Mark's the dealer. So we have to get, we have to get involved in this. It's just ridiculous. So, okay.
Do you know who that is, Kelly?
Um, House Bill one summary analysis by Dr. Howard Fleeter. Would you be the one sponsoring it? So I'll send this to you in your weekly update. Also send it to you in a separate email.
Have we gone about it, like Rodney Creach and Thomas Hall who were in meetings?
If, if, if you think that they're part of this, yes. Yes, I'd say, well, that works.
They're gonna vote.
They're gonna vote.
Okay. We'll follow that. Very good. Absolutely. Let's ride and pester. So tell our story. We have to personalize it for our own community. That's just taking more money away from Edgewood schools and putting it elsewhere. We're less responsible. Okay, on that note.
So, want to ask, so the chamber goal, career pathway wise, present that. Um, you know, along with the graduation uh, requirements and such, um, there is a program that Butler Tech uses called Rise Up.
Yes, we were just talking about that last week.
And I, because I know I, I had the teacher of that program uh, was in my building and I sent, we agreed to send him to Ross and we agreed to send him to Hamilton. To do that program there, kids can get twelve points, I think, in that program. And it's uh, it's right down the alley of the chamber and kids working in restaurants and businesses in the, in the towns and the cities. So uh, we probably have.
I need to look into that.
Yeah. It's worth twelve points, graduation.
We will be on that dime. Okay.
I wanted to ask you about the student advisory committee that you were talking about. Will there be any connection to, will they come to the board? Will we need?
Oh, that's an awesome idea. I have not done that in the past that I remember, but I love that idea. I think student voice is what it's about. Typically how that's worked, but I'm open and we can let them devise this. Typically I'll meet once a quarter unless there's a, a, a major concern that we're working on or a problem we're solving. We'll sit down, they, they decide the agenda. I might bring in something like House Bill one and talk a little bit about it. Um, you would be amazed the input that our students come up with. I'm, I'm just impressed with their leadership. So I'd be happy to have them do that.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is we have a student here tonight that participated in public participation and brought, brought some really good ideas up, which we're gonna.
Fix courage. Takes courage.
Are gonna come to you and, and get looked at, you know, at the administration level. I know that, you know, I've had an opportunity, uh, to come into the high school multiple times and work with the leadership and character class. And we've got some, we've got some really smart kids in this district that, you know, that are leaders and are going to be phenomenal leaders and I, I think it's really cool if you try to tie.
And I like their out of the box thinking, sometimes we get so tied into the motion, as you might have just heard him go about some of this legislation, that sometimes we forget that out of the box or just clear, different thinking and, and, uh, they, they are a fresh breath of air in, in that problem solving process, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think there's some opportunity there.
Yes.
Cause our answer oftentimes, that's how it's always been, and I think that's most of our answer.
No, we're here for kids, they, and they change, and we have to, you have to be ready for that.
Yeah.
Okay, good questions, just good thoughts, anything else? Okay, that concludes my items.
Thank you. Um, next we have items to approve, numbers, Mr. York.
Uh, we'll have an opportunity to talk to some, uh, actually, we, uh, representatives in Washington, centers in Washington, but they, they are promoting and pushing this voucher, uh, systems across the country, so going there in March, March nineteenth. With Butler's app, uh, so, and we have meetings set up with Warren Davidson and several others, so we'll have opportunity to chat with some of those, those guys.
We'll have to come back and share that.
Yeah.
Good.
Any notes?
Entered into the OSBA executive committee world, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, and sat in on those meetings and, um, so it's, will be able to put, give some input on, in OSBA, uh, some of the decisions that are.
Do you see anything on the horizon that we need to be paying attention to?
Nothing that stood out to me, but, um, we'll, we'll wait and see.
Okay, good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one last time, what an awesome event we had over the weekend, um, with all the work that, you know, Lori and her team, and I saw there was collaboration from all the buildings. Um, Curtis is a phenomenal DJ, I had no idea, Andrew is an amazing decorator, we had, uh, we had, we had a lot of people that came together to, to pull that off and I know it was a, it was a really good time, I was glad to be there. The only thing that I didn't like about Saturday night is that it's my last daddy-daughter dance and the next time she goes to a dance, I will not be her date.
She's not gonna want you to chaperone in prom, I assure you.
I didn't say I wouldn't be there, I said I wouldn't be her date. But no, it was a great job by everybody that was involved in, in that, it was a really awesome time and those kids had a blast.
Doug, we were talking about that in cabinet this morning and it sounds like a lot of money was raised for the PTO, so that's amazing, good for you, Max.
Oh, I absolutely loved seeing all the little girls and how excited they get. I was talking to a dad that was there and he said, like, before he went, you know, he wasn't allowed to see his daughter, it was like they were getting married.
Aww.
She came walking, they were like, you know, you can't see her, you can't see her, and she did the reveal and she came down the steps and he said he just broke down and started crying. And he was, it was, it was awesome to see that, like, all the little girls, to see how excited they are, how much they love it and stuff, it was, it was awesome.
What'd you describe as a?
Well, I said it was like stepping into like one of those Disney princess books, like it, um, it was awesome.
It's cool.
Any else?
Oh, that's it.
Mr. Pressler? That was it?
He's still on.
I'll do you next time, we'll have to do others. Um, I don't have anything other than just to thank the Spidey for taking on, um, becoming our superintendent. I know that was just interim and then all of a sudden she's the official superintendent, but I just would welcome you, I think you, taking off with guns and leaves in it, or not, that's true. Um, but I appreciate all the information, so, thank you. Um, next, we will look for a motion to go into executive session, um, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee or student, request a public hearing. Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. Is there a motion for?
So moved.
Mr. Pressler, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Flowers, can you call roll please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Six fifty five. All right, we're back in regular session. We will be looking for a motion to approve the personnel items as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. York? Mrs. Flowers, will you call roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, yeah, I just think it's for you twice. What's that, sorry?
She didn't say it's Mr. Pressler.
I don't know.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, next we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. York, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Flowers, can you call roll please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.